Okay, there being none, we will start with our Helene update. Ms. Bender.
Thank you Chair. As usual, we'll start with Dane on debris.
Chair Edwards, Commissioners, good afternoon. Hope everybody's doing well. So as we kick this update off, we want to talk about debris and where things are in that progress. So first off, we want to, is it on me? Thank you. So talking about the direct federal assistance missions, right-of-way debris removal, that mission is complete. Those collections along right-of-way, those ended in April. So that, you see that number's more static as we do more recent updates. So approximately 1.5 million cubic yards was removed from our county right-of-ways. Total soil and silt at around 150,000 tons or 6,500 loads for the soil and the silt. The private property debris removal program. So some encouraging news on that, that mission was extended until August 1st. So that gave a little more time for us FEMA, Corps of Engineers, to continue that work on. And so 5,292 applications were received through the county and Tetra Tech, our consultant, helped us process those, get those to FEMA, to Corps, and then to Ashbrit for the work to be scoped. 5,282 have been delivered. There's 10 that, packets that were still, more nuances that we're working through with owners to make sure we get all that information, but really good to see where those numbers are as far as total applications received. We've got those over to FEMA. And progress for the actual cleanup, as of yesterday, 3,985 sites have been cleaned up. So private parcels have been cleaned up to date. And with the August 1st deadline extension, with, you know, conversations with Corps and Ashbrit on progress, we have a good, it's on a good trajectory that that should be completed by August 1st. There, there is some funding mechanisms, obviously conversation with FEMA and the federal, excuse me, federal coordinating officers that are ongoing as far as getting those last packets released from FEMA to the Corps of Engineers for scoping, but things are, things are progressing well. PPDR complaints and concerns, I know we receive these, I think some come to your offices as well, and we want to remind everybody if there is concerns or questions or complaints about the private property debris removal work at their properties, to please report this to debris management@helene@bunkhamcounty, I'm sorry bunkhamnc.gov. And we are working closely, county staff, Tetra Tech, with Corps and Ashbrit to make sure these concerns, questions, complaints are relayed over to the Corps and to Ashbrit. And I think what we've seen is those have been timely responses and getting in the field to try to work to address those concerns. Waterway debris removal, this mission was extended again, if you remember last time, it was extended to, from June 1st to the 15th and now to the end of this month, to the 30th. And Ashbrit projects, they're approximately 95% complete with the waterway debris removal. And those are the points that were identified that were immediate threats to public infrastructure or to public safety. So the things are progressing well there with around 1.5 million cubic yards picked up to date. So right-of-way debris removal, that program closed out. Debris removal from right-of-way really was finishing up in April. And we want to, we want to continue to remind our friends, our neighbors, citizens, community members, please do not bring debris to the right-of-way. There are no collection vehicles out there picking that material up at this point. And we're very sympathetic, empathetic of what our folks have gone through, but when you bring in debris to the right-of-way at this point, it can cause further safety issues because there's no immediate collection point for, for the right-of-way debris. We also want to remind folks on is the Bunkham County landfill is a great resource to, for folks to bring that material to. And you know, our standard tipping fee for CND or MSW is $45 a ton, but if those materials are separated out, primary debris streams like vegetative or, you know, concrete, brick inert materials, those are half the normal tip fee, right? So $22.50 per ton for those materials. So there's ways to have cost savings in that, but please make sure if you're utilizing contractors or neighbors helping you, whatever the case may be, please make sure that material is managed and taken to the landfill for proper disposal. We are continuing to work with FEMA on the remaining debris points that are along the right-of-way that were ineligible. So we're having conversations with state emergency management, FEMA, and with our state partners across the board. So we still have some points that we're, we're certainly keying in on that we want to see action taken on. So, and continue, we do continue to collect data about any remaining debris piles that the public has identified and wants to make sure they're getting that information to us. A Bunkham call center, 828-250-6100. Our operations have changed somewhat over the past few weeks. So that's Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And as a reminder, we will be closed Thursday for Juneteenth holiday. Residential and commercial demolition, we continue to bring this back and talk to the board. And staff and Tetra Tech continue to work urgently to get the information needed for the packets. Again, for the, for the, for the folks that selected demolition for their, for structure on their property through the PPDR program, there's, there's a lot of documentation that has to come through. And again, one of the critical documents that does, is taking time is through any lien holders that may have a stake in the property or the structures. So we continue to work through those. The total applications received for demo was 190. And another checkpoint that these, these packets have to flow through is through SHIPO, the state agency. So we think about environmental historic preservation, that's, that's a touch point. And what we're, what we're understanding is there, there are many of our applicants, our, our folks that have submitted that do have historical or environmental sensitivities. So that does delay the review process while they're working through that and seeing what subject matter expertise is going to be needed for those cleanups. And the average review period for those is six to nine weeks. So FEMA and the Corps of the 190, FEMA and the Corps have received from, from Bunkham County through Tetra Tech, 107 demolition packets for review. Out of those packets, Bunkham County has 74 of those, City of Asheville's 23, and the town of Black Mountain makes up 10 of those applications. And so 10 have completed the FEMA-Corps review, so they've gone through FEMA initial review, they've gone through SHIPO, and now they're, they're essentially sitting at FEMA federal coordinating officer's desk to, for the funding, basically sign off, and then that'll go to the Corps of Engineers, which will task that to Ashbrit. So those, those first 10 are really close. And we have a debris update tomorrow with all of our partners, so we'll see, we'll see where those are. And that, those are the high-level updates, Commissioners. I'll, I'll try to answer any questions you might have. Yes, sir.
It relates to the extensions of some of these missions. I've heard, I'm trying to understand, like, I've heard a possibility of these, of these missions being extended, but also that the state might come in and finish some of the work in some counties, but not all. So can you explain kind of what, what happens next over the next three or four months?
Yeah, I, I, thank you for the question, Commissioner. I think what, you know, the direct step in coordination from the state and the FEMA level, you know, they're, they're constantly communicating on the DFA mission, the one we've been operating under for, for months and months now through the debris missions, as far as what's going to be remaining and when the decision is made for DFA to, to, to end, direct federal assistance to end. And that's not saying that mission is complete, that's saying the direct federal assistance mission is complete on these buckets, the right-of-way, private property, and waterway. So I think we, you know, the county has bonused a lot of those needs and assessments on, early on together to get that information. So a lot of those really big needs were addressed through the DFA mission as we, as we communicated those to FEMA. I think the, the conversation is when, when DFA is done and there's still debris work to do on these buckets, that's when the state, the SMART program, we've talked a little bit about that, would theoretically step in and begin managing the remainder of those programs across the state, really, and, and, and finish up those eligible projects. And then those will be the key. We know that, you know, the main thing is it's got to be a threat to public health or, or public infrastructure. So we're continuing to have those conversations, Commissioner, as far as, you know, understanding the timelines and the deadlines, that's critical to see, you know, when that baton is handed off and what the needs are past DFA. But that's, that's where those conversations are.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you Chair, thank you Commissioners.
Next is Ryan with HMGP, ASMGP.
Good afternoon. We wanted to go over a little bit of the information about HMGP. Brad Hughes is on vacation this week, and so we're hoping that he's enjoying his time. A little bit of information, we have currently 337 applications. Of those 337 applications, 230, the majority, are acquisitions. 70 of those are elevation, 23 are land stabilization, nine are mitigation reconstruction, which with that, we have five that are slope stabilization, nine are still interested but have not committed. And that is an increase of 18 cents our last project. Wanted to go over just a little bit of the information about how this process works. So the information is submitted to FEMA. Once it is submitted to FEMA and they approve the project, then we go into the implementation phase. First, there's an RFP process that opens up for demo and removal by the state of North Carolina. Then, once the RFP closes after 30 days, the RFP, the North Carolina Emergency Management will review the proposal and select a vendor. Once they select a vendor, and usually that takes seven days for them to do that, once they select a vendor, then the vendor award and notice proceed is sent out with a project timeline of approximately 14 days. After that, that occurs, then North Carolina Emergency Management and the vendor will meet with Bunkham County. Whenever they meet with Bunkham County, we will host an informational meeting with the property owners in that specific project group, because each one of these is in different project groups. If you'll remember, we've already had three that's gone in so far, and we have two more that's kind of pending currently, which may be a larger groups as they come in. So that will allow us to answer any questions. And then the formal project phase begins, which will include a property survey and appraisal, to determine the property value one day prior to the storm. At this point in time, then the project proceeds forward, allowing for the property to be turned to green space in perpetuity. In HMGP, we also have infrastructure projects, 5% initiative projects, and 7% planning projects. So HMGP assists communities in reducing long-term disaster risk for residential and commercial acquisitions, elevation and mitigation reconstruction, as well as additional projects to assist the communities long-term. And so some of these projects that we have available to us within this, and we have to demonstrate cost effectiveness with the, with, with the infrastructure project, is erosion control along stream banks or slopes, wind and floodproofing of buildings, construction of FEMA-compliant safe rooms, installing backup power system like generators or solar or battery storage, and wildfire risk reduction at around key locations. 5% initiative projects could be things like a warning system, like sirens, emergency alert signing, signage, hazard mapping and GIS upgrades, community education campaigns on disaster preparedness, and small-scale generators or other preparedness enhancements. For the 7% projects, these, this is primarily for mitigation and planning phase such as updating our local hazard mitigation plan, risk assessments and studies, and geospatial data collection support for future mitigation. So a lot of this, with these, it allows us flexibility to not only look at structural risk, but also creative forward-thinking investments to help us with planning and preparedness. So with this, on May 30th, the short-form submission was opened up. So what the short-form submission was, was basically two slides for each, each of the agencies to be able to submit that information. And it was really an informational gathering for them to do that. And the state has a program called Salesforce. Eventually, they will go into Salesforce, but this is a preliminarily, you put it in, we want to see what you've got. And so with that, we were able to submit 23 applications. The regular submission does not end until October 31st. And so we will still be able to submit, it's not just this one-time submission, but this allowed the state to kind of have a snapshot and picture of what we're asking for currently and all the other counties around us of what they have. So as, as I stated, I'm sorry, 29 projects. With that, we had four land stabilization projects at just over $4 million. Six flood-proof wind hardening projects. Eight safe rooms for use as short-term shelters. Two secondary power sources projects. Two wildfire mitigation projects. Five 5% initiative projects. And seven, or two 7% planning projects. And so this, this allows us to move some of those projects forward at a total of $97.94 million. This does, again, this is not the sum of our projects, but it is a quick snapshot and a quick entry into the project world with HMGP.
Question? I could ask you questions about this program all day, but I'll try to narrow it. I tried looking up and watching a YouTube video from NCEM on the difference between the LOI, like what was, what was needed by May versus what's by October. What's the difference between the two, and why would they have two different deadlines for the same thing, but two different processes for the same thing?
So, so our understanding is they wanted to get this, this process moving forward. However, the Salesforce to accept these was not ready at that time, and so they wanted to go ahead and get it moving forward, and that's why they did the LOI to allow for project submissions to start the process so they could get those people to start evaluating those program, the submissions, and get that moving forward because, and then we'll move into Salesforce at a later date.
I think my second category of questions is around for the things we have applied for so far, which again, it's not over yet, so if you apply for more, which is great. Have we thought about, have either county staff or community partners thought about either water and sewer extension projects that might be related to resilience? And/or kind of linear flood mitigation projects on either Big Ivy or Swananoa River?
So my understanding is we did have the extension, looking at the extension and see if that is eligible. Again, it's got to have a cost-benefit analysis done on that. As far as flood, different flood projects, that we have a gamut of different programs that, that, that we have been evaluating to try to see that. There's project, we have, we have identified projects that we don't even know how to do them yet. Just to, just to give you an idea, that does not limit us to the projects. This doesn't limit us to the projects that have been submitted and what we have asked for, dollar amount or the scope of work, because we've not provided that yet. This allows us to get that going to where we determine what that scope would be and what the solution is going to be, because some of these, we are still working on, on finishing the cleanup.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ryan? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is Matt Evans on funding reimbursements.
Good afternoon Commissioners. We wanted to give a quick update on funding and how the reimbursement process is going. So current Helene spending is around $24 million. And we're categorizing the spending into two buckets to simplify the conversation around FEMA funding. $19 million in spending is associated with what we call emergency work. That includes things like reimbursable expenditures related to what Dane was talking about with debris removal, overtime and benefits of staff, the county EOC operations, and other, what FEMA calls emergency protective measures. It's those responding to the event costs. $5 million is spending associated with permanent work costs, which is county-owned or maintained buildings, we've got some service roads and some parks. We're currently and actively pursuing FEMA public assistance for all emergency work and permanent work. And we are pursuing insurance where applicable, which is mostly buildings, contents, and vehicles. Of the approximate $5 million in permanent work spending to date, we have reasonable insurance. We anticipate insurance paying for $3.6 million of that. As of this presentation, Bunkham County has 67 projects in FEMA's grants portal. We've submitted 20 projects, have another seven projects actively in development, and 40 placeholder projects to be submitted at a later date. Placeholder projects were submitted to FEMA to ensure we had everything listed by a deadline in early May. Permanent work projects, again, those repairs to or replacement of county-owned or maintained buildings, service roads, and parks, take a slightly different path in the reimbursement process or in the payment process than emergency work projects. And the permanent work projects are submitted on the front end, and it's a collaborative process with FEMA in their grants portal. Emergency work projects are developed prior to submission to reduce time-constrained requests for proposals or requests for information or jeopardizing successful funding. I've got another bullet here of other projects which include, at this time, things that aren't reimbursements to the county. The majority of these projects are landslides, and what I mean by that is they're giving us money upfront. I'll talk more about that, Troy. So as of this meeting, we've submitted five emergency work projects, included the expedited debris removal project submitted in December, in October. So in October 24, we submitted an expedited funding request to FEMA, which was successful. And we were, it resulted in the county receiving $34 million to be used for right-of-way debris cleanup. That's important. The scope was limited, right-of-way debris cleanup. Understanding the immense scope of our right-of-way pickup, we chose to utilize the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, significantly lowering our financial burden related to right-of-way debris pickup. All in all, the county spent approximately $1.3 million on right-of-way debris removal before engaging the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. FEMA and North Carolina Emergency Management would not allow us to spend any of the additional money that we had from that expedited funding on anything outside of that scope, so we've been working on sending that money back to the state. A team at Bunkham County has been working with FEMA and North Carolina Emergency Management to pilot landslide stabilizations across the county. We've submitted two projects for engineering work, for slides at Forty McCormick, the old landfill, and the Grovemont community of Swananoa. Depending on results from the engineering work, FEMA has stated that they will increase the amounts to cover work beyond engineering. We submitted a project to pay the county back for EOC costs related to our time in Embassy Suites, and to pay ourselves back for water tankers and inmate shuttling at the detention center. The submitted project amount totals $4.6 million, 3.1 million of which are funds to pay Bunkham County back. Our team is working diligently and queuing up more projects to submit, which will be funding to pay the county back for money we've already spent. On this list is approximately $4.2 million in private property debris removal costs, approximately $900,000 related to flood damage assessments, approximately $480,000 for connectivity work, that's the ERC broadband line, $1.3 million in EOC costs through March, FEMA likes timelines, and there's a cutoff date in March that we're sticking to for certain things, and around $4 million in staff overtime and benefits. So all in all, I'm anticipating submitting approximately $11 million in addition to the amount I mentioned earlier by late July to FEMA. Again, these are funds to pay the county back. Any questions?
Can you go back and want you to spend a couple of seconds on that landslide pilot that you talked about? Or is somebody going to cover that?
I think someone's going to cover that, but I, I am prepared. So what's going on is we've worked with a task force with FEMA and NCEM to identify, identify landslides across the county. So we have worked to develop two pilot projects that we are learning as we go with FEMA and NCEM to expand that out not only in our county but other counties. So right now, it's A and E work only. Yeah, so the money that we've received so far is only for what they call soft costs. It's the geotechnical engineering, I don't know about geotechnical engineering, but it's cost to determine if the ground's still moving. So FEMA has large projects and they have small projects. We're working with the state to develop how we receive funds, but they're saying anything under $1 million, we're going to get upfront. What will happen is we will take those funds, do a bidding process, work with an engineer, determine if the ground's still moving, the ground's still moving. We then work with FEMA and NCEM to expand the scope of the project to get more money. So the numbers that are represented on this screen, that 108-335 may be a portion of $700,000. The $1.3 million may be a portion of $14 million. So I think the overall takeaway of any financial update you all get is it's fluid for a while. And I know we're nine months in, but the things change and they're actively in development.
Go ahead, I have one, but go ahead, pardon.
I mean, I think my question that, do you have rules? I'm just trying to decipher the good news and the bad news out of the reimbursement situation. And it's 70% clear to me at the moment, I guess, what the good news and the bad news is.
The good news is we've submitted reimbursement requests to FEMA. So we can put a pin there, because that's the good news.
Okay.
The bad news is we haven't received any funding yet.
Gotcha, okay.
But we have already submitted, and to Matt's point, it is fluid, it is working, and they're working with the team to make sure we can get that reimbursement. So the $4 million is already requested, and then 10 more million is getting ready to put that into the system by the end of next month.
But the categorization of the, of the money that you eloquently explained, I guess, do we have feedback from them that we're like, that they agree with our categorization of what we expect?
We work every, every week with FEMA and North Carolina Emergency Management to make sure we're doing everything that we need to do to make sure we get the most money back possible.
I guess that's my question.
And that's one of the reasons we have Tetra Tech as well with us, so they're also helping to make sure that we do it the way that we would maximize our reimbursement.
Once those funds are received, what, what does that replenish?
So that first slide.
Can we go back to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks, Matt.
So it's interesting, y'all, it's like we're taking a very complex idea and trying to distill down what it means, because if you're looking at any public data that shows that we have a certain amount of projects submitted, some of that's for the money that we're paying ourselves back for. A lot of that's for projects that FEMA is going to cut us a check for on the front end, such as a park redevelopment. And then some of it is those other projects, like the landslides. Those weren't costs that were borne by Bunkham County, those are just actively going. So there is a caveat there. So we spent $24 million. So some of that is what you would think it would be, it's the salaries of people working. There are certain parameters around that. So one of the projects that had listed on there, $4 million-ish dollars, that's paying some of that. But all of the, I think it was around $13, $14 million is paying this back right here.
Got it, thank you for that.
And it's going to be a mixture of insurance and FEMA public assistance. We've tried to be conservative and load everything into FEMA, and where insurance steps in, we'll remove those there, but they will cover things like deductibles, so.
Are there other questions for Matt? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan with housing.
Good afternoon Commissioners. Our first housing item to update you on is the FEMA temporary units. These are the 74 manufactured homes and travel trailers that FEMA installed for survivors who, whose homes were not habitable after the storm. And they can stay into, stay in those units for potentially up to 18 months. These units were placed under the emergency housing ordinance with some flexibility from the state with respect to building code. So these were installed without permanent foundations, and there's temporary utilities, power, sewer, and water connected to these at this point. At this time, there are 50 units occupied by survivors. 11 of those are on private property, 39 are in commercial parks. As the recovery continues, one of the options that FEMA makes available to the survivors is the opportunity to purchase some of these units at a reduced price and under the terms that they are as-is, where-is. So for So for those potential homebuyers, they would be responsible with complying with any zoning or building code, paying for any of the costs to bring those units into compliance. They may have to relocate the unit to a permanent placement within 30 days of sale. They are responsible for identifying that location if they can't keep it like in a commercial park, and they are also required to have hazard insurance or, and assume the utility payments on that unit when they take possession. So at this time, FEMA has notified 26 survivor households of their eligibility to purchase units. They've heard back from 21 of those households who are interested, three, they're still waiting for responses from, two of those households have decided that's not the option for them. Of that 21, 18 survivor households have gone through the interview process with FEMA, looking at their documentation, at their housing plan, whether or not they will be able to take possession to purchase those units. And six households have received letters from FEMA indicating that they can purchase those units. I will note, as indicated on the slide, the households can only purchase the units that they occupy, and those units are only available to households that have been staying in one of these temporary units. So there's a very limited scope to this process. As the households consider their options, one thing to look at, to be aware of, would be the estimated cost for purchasing the unit. So FEMA does make the units available at a reduced price, anywhere from $4,000 to $23,000. Then the households could be looking at transportation costs in the area of $10,000 to move the unit, and then potentially another, up to another $10,000 to address the connections and bring that unit up to code. So part of that math is they will also be looking at what resources they might have available. One may be the FEMA home repair funds that they could have received. We know that maximum is $42,500. Also looking at any insurance proceeds they may have, so there is the potential that a household could need additional resources to help make that unit purchase and placement a reality, especially if they've been working on some other home repair plan to the unit that they lived in prior to the storm. So there's an opportunity for nonprofits in the community or the long-term recovery group to assist in the purchase or placement of those units. FEMA has indicated they've worked with the long-term recovery groups in other communities in previous disasters to help make that possible for these households. The other one would be an opportunity for the county to make the Affordable Housing Service Program Home Repair Grant available to those households to address some of those needs, help address the transport and address the connections for utilities. And so staff have been following FEMA's process along the way and focusing on making sure that the county is communicating the regulations and the building code requirements to these households. FEMA has agreed to send a basic letter to the households that are eligible to purchase the units to help them understand what the requirements are, and has also indicated that they will provide, through an amendment to our sharing agreement, the contact information for the households that do choose to purchase a unit so that they can connect with staff. Any of the survivors who want to reach out can contact the One Buncombe Call Center to be connected with staff to help address the needs on that particular unit. So I'll pause there for a moment before going to the other housing update, if there are any questions.
So a quick, couple of quick questions, thank you for this. So there are 11 sites that are individual units, and those are all temporary, right?
All of these would be considered temporary.
Because there were 39 that were in parks, so I assume those do not need to be moved if they're currently in a, in a trailer park?
So the household would need to have some sort of lease agreement with the commercial park to keep that unit there, and would be responsible for addressing any of the connections and the foundation that would bring it into compliance with building code.
Okay, so we do have units within residential trailer parks that are not to code because they've expanded the park in some way or something like that?
They, these were installed as quickly as possible to help get folks into housing.
Okay. And then, I'm curious, I've asked about this before, but for the units that are declined or if the state has surplus that's never been offered or accepted, does the county have the ability to negotiate a price to purchase those?
So FEMA does have ownership of the units that aren't transferred, and they either remove the units and sell them at auction, or they work through a process where they can be donated to a nonprofit or a unit of local government. And so that's something that could be worked out with FEMA.
Okay, and I would be very curious if we, as a commissioner, would be interested in working with FEMA to negotiate having those, the purchase for a good rate or donate to local nonprofits that are providing housing for folks that are facing homelessness. I think we have a unique opportunity right now to try and leverage this opportunity to get folks in homes. And then, the other question there is, last question, for the County Affordable Housing Service Program and the Home Repair Grant, do we know offhand what changes we would need to make to that, to make that available to people, to help them in this transition? Because I assume we'll probably need to do that at our next committee, Affordable Housing Committee meeting, right?
I think that would be a matter of addressing in the policy, the purpose, specific purpose for the home repair funds, and what those eligible costs would look like.
Okay, so changing eligibility so that we can offer that to folks, okay. I think we should maybe discuss that at our next Affordable Housing Committee, how we can utilize those funds to help people. Okay, those are my questions, thank you so much.
Any other questions? Any other questions for Jonathan?
I think my only other one is, you know, I'm trying to think of how people in this situation can find out about their options. I definitely, I would definitely encourage people to call the One Buncombe Call Center, but is that the only way? And is, are there FEMA caseworkers assigned to those kind of specific folks in those circumstances?
So FEMA is working, this is a FEMA program, so they're working directly with the households at this point. That's part of the reason why we've amended the sharing agreement with FEMA, is to help make sure that we can make contact with those households once they've accepted an offer. But FEMA has also sent our basic outreach letter to those households, saying, hey, if you are interested, you can reach out to the county and we can help you understand your options.
Okay.
All right.
It's important to note, this is not a widespread, it is for just the folks that have a house already.
Right.
So it's pretty targeted.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the second item related to housing is a bit of good news, in that the North Carolina Department of Commerce has announced that they have opened the Renew NC Single Family Housing Program application. This was funded through the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Action Plan, designating a little over $860 million for owner-occupied home repairs. This program is going to be managed by the Department of Commerce across the 29 impacted counties. The activities under this program focus on repairing, rebuilding, and replacing single-family homes. This includes both stick-built and manufactured homes. Looking at the eligibility, the damages on any of the homes must have been a result of Helene. The applicants for the program must have owned and occupied the home when the storm hit, and the applicants must be income-qualified based on HUD's income limits. The program will have a priority on various income levels, specifically at households that are below 60% AMI, the next group from 60% to 80% AMI, and then households from 100, from 100%, or 80% AMI up to 120% area-meeting income, as well as having a characteristic, specifically those households that have seniors that are over the age of 62, children under the age of 18, or individuals in the home who have disabilities. And so the state provided a little more information about exactly how they plan to phase the application and repairs. So they'll do a four-phase process, and each phase will focus on the household characteristics. So if they, if there are seniors, children, or those with accessibility needs, the income level, and then the determination on whether or not the house was in an area that was most impacted and distressed, that's the mid-status. I will point out, there is, in Phase Three, an option for households to receive reimbursement for repairs that they have already made. This will be a little more complicated than the program, the earlier phases of the program, as the state will need to do a determination on what repairs have already been completed, what kind of documentation is available on those repairs, and then how does that comply with any of the federal requirements? Because these are CDVG funds made available through HUD. It's a quick overview of what applicant households would expect in the process. So the initial phase will be, the initial steps will be applying for assistance and having their case reviewed for eligibility. Then there will be a site visit to determine what damages occurred at the home and what would be required to repair that, do any kind of environmental assessment. Homeowners that are awarded funds would then sign a grant agreement to receive the repairs, and then the North Carolina Department of Commerce would work with the homeowner to coordinate the construction, handle permitting, and any of, and conduct those repairs. As I mentioned earlier, there is the possibility for the program to include reimbursements in Phase Three, following that there are certain conditions about what repairs have been conducted and what documentation is available that meets that, the state's program standards. I will note, the selection of contractors is made by the state, so homeowners won't be contracting with a contractor, they will not be responsible for that component of it, but they will be expected to remain in the home after it's been repaired for three years, and that is handled as a forgivable loan that the home, that the homebuyer or homeowner signs, and if they relocate during that period, they would be responsible for repaying a portion of the grant within that three-year period. So the application actually opened yesterday. Residents are encouraged to apply even if they don't necessarily fall into one of the eligibility categories that were listed. They can access that application at www.renewnc.org. They can also download the mobile app, Renew NC Housing Program. They can apply over the phone at 888-791-0207, and they can also visit the Helene Resource Center at 94 Cox Avenue, so where the Tax Department Office used to be. Take any questions?
Any question, further questions for Jonathan? Yes.
I've got one, of course. Obviously, one of the eligible expenses here for this program that I know isn't ours, but is to build someone a brand-new single-family home from scratch. And so I see and I understand folks have to prove where they used to live and the damage and what happened to them and their income, but does, does an applicant have to build a new home on that property, or can they find a different property? Can they put it on their cousin's land? Can they go out and get a loan and buy vacant land? You know what I mean?
I don't know that, I don't know if the state has provided any detail on that. There is an option for the home to be replaced if damages are too severe, so that would likely occur at the same location. But I, we can definitely look into that and see if there are any other details as they release more guidance about the program.
Because I guess the site conditions of the property may be part of the cause of the damage to begin with, right? So I guess that's why I ask, so, okay.
Well, we'll need to look into that specific question, because I believe this was mostly about repairs.
Right.
But if the repairs are too extensive, then we need to get the answer, because this does not conflict with HMPG, which is a buyout.
Right.
Or an elevation, right, or reconstruction, so we'll need to get some more details on that one.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there other questions? All right.
I just want to make sure that we prepared these slides so that you can then take them and share with constituents and get the message out as far and wide. We know we had over 12,000 homes that were damaged, so if there's a way that you can actually reshare this, that would be helpful as well. And of course, people can come to Helene Recovery Center on Cox Avenue to speak to a FEMA person for any of these housing programs that we talked about.
Excellent. Do you have another question?
I have one more. You mentioned a category, or a later phase, for folks to get reimbursed for expenditures they maybe already expended, and that's not the priority, I guess, based on the program's parameters, but if someone like sees this right now, should they go ahead and apply for that right away? Or how should, how should that kind of person think about this?
So this, this application launched yesterday, staff reached out to the state and had some preliminary conversation, asking similar questions. They encouraged residents to go ahead and apply, understanding that if they are seeking reimbursement, to hang on to their receipts. Also, when, if the, if the household is eligible for reimbursement, they may need to stop work temporarily while the state does an assessment on the home to determine what repairs are necessary, what repair, what repairs are eligible, and make sure everything is in compliance there. So they definitely encouraged getting the message out into the community and making sure that folks apply.
Okay.
Great. All right, thank you, Jonathan.
Raphael with the line, an update on land slides.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am here to follow up a little bit on what Mr. Evans started talking about with the landslide pilot. So at your May Helene update, burnet walls, talked to you about the volume of landslides. And what we've been doing is really trying to bucket all our landslides into one of three buckets. Bucket number one, it's landslides on county property. As Mr. Evans mentioned earlier, those will be addressed through FEMA public assistance. The second bucket is individual slides, so these are slides that occurred on a single property, just about 145 of them, and the county actively threatened a residential structure. Those, we are actively working to push towards a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program to be addressed through that mechanism. The third category, of which there is no playbook from North Carolina Mercy Management or FEMA, because we have not seen the scale of situation, are the multiple property, large complex slides, of which there are about 55 of them in the county. So today, I want to talk about that third category. So what is complex slide? At the most basic level, it's a large slide that impacts at least two partials with the residential structures that are threatened, right? From the FEMA perspective, if it doesn't threaten an access road for emergency service vehicles, or it doesn't threaten a residential structure, it is not going to be eligible for FEMA assistance. Those are two kind of criteria, one of them has to be met. And these are slides that can require substantial work across multiple private properties. And realistically, in the FEMA world, there are two phases or two separate projects to each landslide. Piece number one. Piece number one is you need the geotechnical engineers to go out there to assess the slide and to engineer a design for how you would stabilize a slide. The second piece then is to actually stabilize the slide. These are both very complex and relatively expensive projects that will take a significant amount of time. As Matt mentioned earlier, the Grovemont slide, just the engineering cost is estimated by FEMA to be approximately one-point-three million dollars. And then the stabilization, stabilization cost would be a minimum of seventeen million dollars. It's the current estimates from FEMA. So what we've done intentionally, because there's not very mu- there's not really a playbook, we're doing a pilot with FEMA North Carolina Mercy Management. They've set up a task force that's working with us. We have staff out in the field with them weekly looking at landslides. And we've developed this kind of conceptual process that we're testing out with them. If this process works for the Grovemont slide, we might be able to replicate this process for further slides. But we are starting with Grovemont. So the first step in the process, FEMA has a team that goes out in the field and expects the slide. The primary thing they're trying to determine is the scope and the size of the slide, and is this a slide that presents an imminent threat, right? Is it a slide that has stopped sliding? It's not going to slide further? Or is it a slide that's going to impact a residential structure or a road? That step is completed for the Grovemont slide. They then take that information, and they have a team of folks from around the federal government that look at all the information, and they scope out what would the engineering look like for this? What kind of scope of engineering work needs to be happened? And they try to figure out what is the general scope of cost? What do they estimate this will cost? So in the Grovemont slide, a one-point-three million dollars for engineering. And then they do some basic math to estimate, using some formulas they have, how much the construction could potentially cost. Once that step is complete, FEMA then obligates the funding to North Carolina Mercy Management. They send the money to North Carolina Mercy Management. That's where the process currently is. The next steps, which are the steps that never really happened before, are the ones we're trying to work through. The next step is to define the advanced funding process of North Carolina Mercy Management and get a written agreement. What this means is historically, if you had a landslide, you might have one or two landslides. Generally, the local government would do the first steps. The money would be sitting in the state. The local government would do the project, and then as they do the project, they get reimbursed the money. That's your standard process. But when you're talking about the extent of money, the cash flow challenges of the county, and the volume of projects, that is not a viable option in this situation. It's not an option that we can take on. So we are working partnership with North Carolina Mercy Funding Management to develop a process where they would advance us some of that money to allow us to start doing the work and to minimize to the extent possible the financial risk and liability the county would face. Once that agreement is done, we then would have the opportunity to release a request for qualifica- qualifications for an engineer to come on board. Once we select an engineer, then North Carolina would, Mercy Management would advance us that agreed-upon project funding. We would then use the engineering firm to do the work. And once the work gets done, North Carolina Mercy Management will give us the remaining money. At the end of this, we have an engineered design of how to stabilize the slope. We have not done any construction. We've not brought any construction contractors on board. We would then work internally with FEMA and with North Carolina Mercy Management to identify, to assess the design that's been presented, look at the funding viability of this option. And if we decide to proceed further, we would restart this process with the construction. And we'd have to do this for every project. So with that, I am happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions? All right, thank you, Raphael.
And the last topic for this afternoon is Taylor, and we're going to talk about the state of emergency that we still have in effect.
So folks, it has been two-hundred-and-sixty-four days ago, when on September the twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-four, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners declared a state of emergency in anticipation of tropical storm Helene's impact to Buncombe County. The intended, uh, declaration was intended to expire on six PM on September the twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four. However, due to the storm's impact occurring on September twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, far exceeding our expectations, we, and causing the catastrophic damage to Buncombe County and to western North Carolina, that declaration was extended and is still in place. So what we are requesting tonight is to end that declaration to coincide with, align with the state of emergency that exists for the state of North Carolina on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
So Commissioners, on your board meeting tonight, that action is on your consent agenda? And normally the chair would just sign that. But we wanted to take the moment because this was such an event for Buncombe County. They actually created a video that, to journey, to share our journey. So if Nick will put the video on, it is seven minutes, and we just want you to see where we've been.
Historic flooding, high winds, and more heavy rain are expected as Helene makes its way to the mountains. This morning had a bit of a power blip right there.
It's been almost nine months since Helene struck, leaving its indelible mark on Buncombe County and our people, our infrastructure, our businesses, and our landscapes. The local state of emergency declared on September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four, signaled the coming of a disaster, the magnitude of which is still not fully realized and may not be for years to come.
This is not a maybe, this is on track to happen.
Helene claimed our homes, destroying three-hundred-and-seventy-two houses and damaging another twelve thousand. Community care stations served as critical hubs where survivors took more than forty-eight thousand showers and did sixty-two thousand loads of laundry while also accessing Wi-Fi, bathrooms, medical services, counseling, and more. And during those freezing winter months, the community care station at the Owen Pool operated twenty-four hours a day to serve as a location for survivors to escape freezing temperatures, snow, and ice. Helene claimed our access, damaging more than three thousand private roads and bridges. While the immediate impacts to critical interstates were among the first to be restored, progress on interior infrastructure arteries has been months-long. Across the county, many temporary solutions, like one-lane bridges, are part of our community's new normal. Helene claimed our landscapes, triggering more than two thousand landslides. The North Carolina Forest Service also reported that as much as forty percent of the trees in Buncombe County, aside from Asheville, were damaged or destroyed. Most significantly, Helene claimed the lives of forty-three of our friends, neighbors, and loved ones in Buncombe County. Though our hearts and spirits have been broken and tested, almost serendipitously, signs of recovery seem to align with the changing of the seasons. New growth emerged with spring, roads and bridges reopened. All public schools resumed normal water usage. Fifteen hundred Helene-related building permit applications have been filed, and to date, more than three million cubic yards of debris have been collected from roadsides and rivers. Storm-related economic impacts have been exacerbated by larger national economic uncertainties. And unemployment in the county remains among the highest in the state. Through Mountain Biz Works Asheville-Buncombe Rebuilding Together Grants, one-hundred-and-thirty-seven small businesses received more than one-point-five million dollars. And the Community Foundation of Western North Carolina has distributed thirty-four million dollars. The American Red Cross gave out almost three million dollars in financial assistance. And at the same time, the Small Business Administration distributed one-hundred-and-fifty-three million dollars to homeowners, businesses, and nonprofits. FEMA distributed more than one-point-eight million dollars to survivors through individual assistance. And North Carolina distributed more than two million dollars in disaster energy assistance and one-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars in disaster rental assistance.
And across western North Carolina, Dogwood Health Trust has invested more than seventy million dollars in relief efforts.
At the Helene Resource Center, which opened at the beginning of April, survivors continue to get one-on-one support from FEMA, North Carolina Disaster Case Management, and county staff as they navigate recovery. Three-hundred-and-twenty-five potential applicants have been identified for the Emergency Watershed Protection Program, which could stabilize more than eleven miles of stream banks. Nine hundred residents have applied for help with private roads and bridges, and three-hundred-and-twenty-nine survivors have applied for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, with two-hundred-and-sixteen of those being for acquisition, seventy-four for structural elevation, and twenty-four for slope stabilization. With no existing blueprint for addressing the incredible volume of landslides, staff have been working with geologists, North Carolina Emergency Management, and FEMA to develop a pilot program to assess the threats that more than one-hundred-and-forty-five unique slides pose to two-hundred-and-forty-six residential properties. Fifty-five of those slides impact two or more properties, making it all the more imperative to identify funding and resources, not just for Buncombe County, but to support all the counties in western North Carolina impacted by landslides. All county pools have reopened for the summer, and incredibly, seven Buncombe County parks have also reopened. Damage at Swananoa's Owen Park is estimated in the millions of dollars, but the first step of progress has started. The request for qualifications for design services for the park's redevelopment has now closed. A team will now review candidates and select a designer. The community will help guide the planning and design, and the project will also include plans for future resilience. At the same time, work on the Swananoa Small Area Plan has started. As the steering committee forms of Swananoa survivors, business owners, and supporters, planning department staff are building the foundation of the land use plan ahead of a community-powered design charrette in Swananoa this winter. Guiding overall long-term recovery planning, more than twenty-six hundred Buncombe County community members provided input through the Envision Buncombe Process. To ensure the voices of our survivors are centered as we move forward, this input will also guide the Swananoa Small Area Plan, Parks Master Plan, and the Strategic Plan Processes. On June fourth, Buncombe County stood down its Emergency Operations Center, officially moving from emergency response to recovery. County staff, along with federal, state, and local partners, are prioritizing economic revitalization, housing, infrastructure, debris management, health and social services, and natural and cultural resources to chart a robust and resilient future for Buncombe County. As the state of emergency comes to a close, we honor the community we were before we experienced the deadliest, costliest disaster to strike our area. And we honor the community that we've become. Two things can be true. Our hearts can be both broken and hopeful at the same time. And our collective experiences are at the center of our path of recovery in Buncombe County.
Thank you. It's amazing how you can go and you can see these images, and they don't hit you hard. And then all of a sudden, it hits you hard again. And so special thanks to our KATE team. You all have been integrated and seen the worst of the worst over and over and over of you, as you've done this work to share with the community at large, so we appreciate that. And to our entire staff for getting us almost to June thirtieth. We're where we are because of each one of you, and I am forever grateful for that. So thank you for sharing this, and I love those words, "two things can be true." We can be heartbroken and hopeful at the same time.
And for jumping in the pool with their clothes on, you know? That's right, that's right.
Thank you. Thank you all. And Dr. Armstrong, I'm sorry you have to follow that video, but you are up next with a Southside Healing Space presentation.
Good afternoon, Chair Edwards and Commissioners. I am Dr. Norio Armstrong, Chief Equity and Human Rights Officer. And today, I'm excited to share with you about the Southside Healing Space. It is a peer-support living space that was birthed from many hours of work of the Fatal Overdose Response Team and extensive community engagement. I will share a recap of the opioid settlement recommendations, which were the foundation for the Fatal Overdose Response Team work and activities. Then I'll provide more information to you and the public about the Southside Healing Space, which is a pilot supported by Dogwood Health Trust Fund. So as the county began receiving opioid settlement funds, a collaborative strategic planning effort was implemented to get community input on how we should prioritize the use of these funds. With over one thousand surveys and input sessions, a dual approach was recommended, highlighting the need to expand access to medication for opioid use disorder, as well as educating the community on naloxone and providing resources to address social determinants of health. In March of twenty-twenty-three, a Fatal Overdose Response Team was formed to address the continued increase in overdose deaths. North Carolina had reported that overdose deaths had increased by twenty-two percent in twenty-twenty-one, with a, with the highest rate being one-hundred-and-thirty-nine percent among Black and African-American people from two thousand and nineteen to twenty-twenty-one. From our community engagement and review of best practices, we knew there was a need to increase points of contact, connection, meeting people where they were, increasing awareness and education about naloxone and medications for opioid use disorder. And we needed to implement culturally informed strategies. According to the Fatal Overdose Team, accordingly, the Fatal Overdose Team began to identify access, communication, support, and connection for actions with the community. While we continued to plan, the Hope and Healing Campaign was launched, having diverse representation on palm cards, sharing messaging and local resources in English, Spanish, Russian, and Ukrainian, providing stories of substance use disorder and recovery from local community members, and increasing audio and visual advertising. We also began planning for a variety of events to continue getting support and important information out to the community. The cards were given out to local nonprofit organizations. They were placed in the lobby of our public buildings, of our forward-facing buildings, and they were advertised on our social media and at the Garell Movie House Theater. Some of those events included the Let's Talk Opioids with Dr. Shukla and other various community events throughout. We began to brainstorm with community partners to identify more tangible solutions. In generating partners and gathering partners together, we explored the best funding available options. Staff considered Dogwood Health Trust as they had demonstrated strong partnership and collaboration in this space previously. Dogwood showed an interest in modeling where and working with the county that convened and supported services provisions by peer-support specialists and community health workers. In January twenty-twenty-four, the grant application was submitted to Dogwood, and by September of the same year, just weeks prior to Helene, we were awarded the grant. As you can imagine, the storm delayed the process. And while the county worked to reopen operations, as well as partners pivoting to meet the needs of the community, we contracted with YMOJA as the lead agency. YMOJA will work directly with the other community partners listed here to ensure effective operations. Nafisa Harrison, Buncombe County's Inclusive Connection and Healing Coordinator, will provide direct administrative support to this initiative. Along with our partners, we are enthusiastic about the opening of this inclusion healing space called the Southside, in the Southside Community at Brown's Temple CME. It is called the Southside Healing Space, where every journey finds its strength. We will, with, which will be a safe place, for individuals to seek support, resources, and mutual aid while continuing to combat negative stereotypes and stigma around mental health and substance use and recovery. So services that will be provided onsite and in community, there will be peer-support health workers and community health workers, psychoeducation and wellness activities, and access to local supports and resources. Some of the outcomes that we will look to assess will be level of engagement, the percentage of unique individuals coming into the program, impacts on combating negative stereotypes and stigmatism, and impacts to connecting to treatment. We know that due to Helene, our community has experienced increased levels of trauma, and as we move into recovery, having a healing space will be critical in ensuring that some of our most vulnerable community members have access to these important resources. The soft opening will be on June twenty-fourth from five-thirty to seven PM, with normal days of operation Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays from ten to six. The soft opening is an opportunity to gather feedback, assess any issues in a low-pressure environment. This will allow us to make any adjustments to ensure effective service delivery and a successful grand opening late summer. We'll also be providing quarterly updates to Dogwood Health and Trust on our success indicators and one-year staff reports to this board of our progress and success indicators. Open for discussion or questions.
Are there any questions for Dr. No? This is exciting to see come into fruition, and we'll look forward to hearing more. And good luck on the soft opening.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, we appreciate the good work.
Thank you, we are excited about it as well.
Jeremiah LaRoy is making his way to us for the Helene Recovery Plan update. Hello, Jeremiah.
Hey. I am just gonna also thank Dr. No for being in between that video and me, because I needed a minute to gather myself, so I'm feeling a lot better, ready to talk to you guys about our recovery plan. So, I actually have a lot more time than I expected. Sometimes the Helene update goes really long, so I'm excited I don't have to blow through these first like five slides in a minute, just to get to what I want to talk about. Recovery plan, why do we do it, and what's our approach to it? A recovery plan is a way for us to essentially put pen to paper to say what's important for us to accomplish in our recovery, right? It's pretty straightforward, it's very project-focused, and names very specific projects that are in alignment with our existing priorities from things like our strategic plan, our comprehensive plan. And of course, we're approaching this in a way that we're doing it collaboratively with our cities and towns, so that we can all, you know, be a part of this process, but of course, giving them the independent authority to approve their own projects and fund their own projects and go their own way with it. But it does, you know, it does speak to the collaborative nature of our cities and towns. And frankly, this was a community-wide disaster, and so there are a lot of overlapping projects too. So we'll take the opportunities to work together where we can. In terms of the development itself, obviously in spring and summer, we're gonna talk a lot about the community engagement and Envision Buncombe Survey today, getting board feedback today, project submission and evaluation. We've been asking our subject matter experts for months now to submit projects to us. What are your ideas? What do we need to be doing? We're going through the process now of evaluating those projects. We've got a team of sixteen subject matter experts from a variety of subjects to get together and sort of go through a formal evaluation process. And of course, we're drafting the plan itself. So we will have, come fall, a draft plan to bring back to you, so we can get some additional feedback from you all. Basically, did we hear you right? You know, we're gonna talk about it more today, but we're gonna come back with a draft plan and say, this is what we thought we heard from you, did we get it right? Open that up for public comment as well, and then hope to have the Helene Recovery Plan adopted in late fall. So Envision Buncombe, this is where we're gonna spend a lot of our time today. I think it's been covered multiple times today, including in the video, the Envision Buncombe Survey, but I want to give you a little more detail about it. It was open from about mid-April to the end of May. And another shout-out to our CAPE team. I agree with Chair Edwards that they have been amazing through this process, and they helped us go create essentially like twenty-eight in-person events during this time, held in thirteen distinct ZIP codes. So we really tried as best we could to spread ourselves out, to go to where people were, to market this survey, to talk to people, to listen to them, bring paper copies if the digital survey wasn't gonna work for you. I know many of you Commissioners were at these events, so you were there for it. And again, having little over twenty-six hundred responses, which I have heard is actually second only to our comp plan, but I think the comp plan was actually out there for a lot longer. So I consider this one the most successful. As you can see, sort of by locality, if you break up our population, this is actually a pretty good representative sample from each of these communities. And some where, you know, Swananoa, for example, being ten percent of the survey respondents is actually a lot more than what their population represents in our community. So I really think we got some good feedback from a really diverse group of folks in our community. Some of the results. So in terms of the focus areas where we think of our strategic plan, community health, public safety, economic development, et cetera, this is just sort of the rank that we saw in terms of importance to folks, right? This is what we heard from folks. And it's not to go unnoticed that if you look back at our Strategic Plan Survey pre-Helene, growth and development was number one, and now we're seeing public safety and community health sort of rise up that list, right? Not surprising. There was also a qualitative answer, you know, you could sort of fill in whatever you like in the box, and so we tried to sort of take those and cobble together what we saw as trends. And this is what we sort of came up with. It's need for smart recovery, sustainable, climate-resilient building, equity and recovery, you know, prioritization of vulnerable populations, let's do this fast but do it right, and of course, resilient infrastructure and housing, none of which is surprising to us. I think, you know, intuitively, we expect to hear a lot of this from our community. These next two slides are really what the survey was all about, which is prioritize these for us, give us your top ten, that sort of thing. So I won't go through every single one of these, because it's a lot to go through. But economic revitalization and health and social services, and these are ranked in terms of where the community said they prioritize these particular issues. I can go slower if you want to read every one of them, but we're gonna get to the important stuff here in just a second. Housing, infrastructure, natural, cultural, you know, wildfire prevention is one that rose to the top, and we heard that repeatedly. You know, building more affordable housing, so some of the things we've heard in the past, but, you know, ordered in a certain way. Where I want to spend our time today, and this is where we get, fingers crossed, to the interactive portion of my presentation today, is really the results of the top ten for our community. So what you're seeing here is essentially, we told our community, give us your top ten priorities, right? And what this says is, of all the people that responded, of twenty-six hundred respondents, seventy-four percent said investing in infrastructure, water, roads, bridges, and telecommunications was in their top ten, right? Not surprising, those are the things that we lost, right? And so it's number one, and it's not by a small margin, right? Because those were some of the most immediate things that people saw disappear. You'll notice that there is not a huge gap necessarily between two through ten the way there is through one from two, right? So I think what you're seeing is that all of these things have a high level of importance, but this was the top ten aggregated. We did spend time going through each individual sort of community to look at these individually. Did Swananoa's look a little different than, you know, Fairview's or something? To tell you the truth, there's really not a huge difference, right? This really was a sort of community top ten, right? And so where I'd like to spend a little time today is having you guys have a look at this, right? And I'd like to hear from each of you, if I could, on, got a handful of questions for you, but I'm gonna try and keep it easy, right? What stands out to you, you know? What stands out to you about what our community is saying so far? Where do you feel a sense of opportunity in what you're hearing from the community when you see this list? And so I'd like to give you each an opportunity to sort of chime in on that, because this is your plan too, and your priorities matter too, and, you know, this plan needs to reflect our community and our board's priorities, right? So I'd really like to hear from you all. Don't make me call on you, because I will, but I very much would like to hear from you and have an opportunity for you all to get some feedback. I will call on you, so somebody has to raise their hand.
Parker had all the questions before, so I think we should start.
That's exactly where I was gonna go. You made eye contact, Parker, that was your fault.
You want to notice our reaction to the data?
Exactly, what stands out to you about what you see up here? And do you feel a sense of opportunity in any of these priorities?
I mean, it doesn't ring true with each of them, but I mean, people want to feel safe, you know, in their own home, in their own community. Is there a difference in your head between number four and number seven? Like, is one, I guess one is protecting property, the other is managing Mother Nature? Is that how I should think about it?
Yeah, I think that's right, that's right. Floodplain managing is pretty comprehensive. Preserving flood-prone property from development is a very specific sort of, you know, this is something we've, again, if you talk to the community out in Swananoa, you're gonna hear that theme a lot, that's kind of how it ended up in the survey to begin with. Is there anything missing, right? Is there anything you assumed would be here that's not?
Yeah, I'm not surprised by these, but I am surprised that something around economic revitalization, economic development, did not make its way into this, specifically when we think about where our unemployment numbers are.
Understood.
We'll take notes for you, so you can focus.
Understood.
I think seeing disaster preparedness and resiliency investments is a key component. As we move forward, I know I'm not fully, I'm moving back to the question you asked previously.
Sure, please.
But I think as we think about our emergency management, I think as we have talked about resiliency projects, an emergency operations center, putting those projects off, we now have an opportunity to address that need as part of our resiliency and being prepared for what comes next, not the if, but the when.
Yeah, absolutely. Given the results that you see up here in front of you, what do you want to make sure that recovery planners, as we're putting this together, hear from you and build into this plan as we continue to move forward? Please, don't be shy.
Something on my mind, and I keep bringing it up every couple of weeks with y'all, is I see this HMGP pot of money as like one of the largest and most open-ended pots of money I've seen in my career. And so I try to think of it through the lens of building back better and building, you know, people want, this list is of things they wish they had a week after Helene and a list of things that they wish to see for the future. And so I guess I just, I think about building back better and more resiliently. So building our parks back, so they're awesome, but also, so they're more.
Right, so that they can withstand whatever the next event might be. Yeah, understood, understood.
I suppose one of the things that I'd, excuse me, take from this is we spend every four years talking about how to get people interested and invested in infrastructure and what that looks like, and it's one of the most difficult things to talk about on the campaign trail, but in terms of actual governance, we have people's attention, it's clearly important, we're seeing the importance of preparedness and having a plan, understanding what that connectivity looks like and what a disaster looks like, hopefully never again, but with people looking at this and seeing a direct eye for detail for what they want to see happen to prevent the worst of the worst from happening again, maybe just kind of being transparent as we go and sharing, this is how this specific effort is going to prevent whatever concern it is, right? If it was not being able to reach family because the roads were not appropriately addressed, or there wasn't a plan for what roads were going to be available at what time, that's something that people want to know about. And I think having some kind of, here is the problem, here's how we're fixing it, transparency as we go will help people feel that investment and continued sense of urgency to keep talking about infrastructure, because that is not the sexiest word in the world.
But it's something people think a lot about now, that's for sure.
Well, I think an important piece of that is to keep this in the forefront of our community's mind over, I know we just passed a budget two weeks ago, but I'm already thinking about next year, and that many of these priorities should be guiding our budget decisions, moving into FY twenty-seven budget planning. But I think the larger community is going to need to continually be reminded of this as we start to make those decisions.
Absolutely.
And this is like, I think we mentioned it a couple of times, but Recovery Project Pacific versus Strategic Plan.
Correct.
This is all, this information we got would also help to direct our strategic planning efforts. But to your point, when we move into budget conversations, we should be thinking about our strategic plan and making sure our money goes where we say our priorities are.
Exactly.
Well, to that point, that's interesting, because I don't, there's no, as best I can tell, line item where we say, like, this is our pot of money that we're going to use to fix in response. That would be great, it'd be perfect, we'd be able to do something like that, but.
So we don't set aside a Pacific money to say, this is that, but because we embed our strategic plan into all the operations and what we do, we will see the projects being done by departments, but to your point, transparency, we need to tie it better to say, this work is gonna go directly to wildfire prevention, or this work is gonna go directly to resiliency investments. But we don't set aside just a pot of money and say, okay, this is that. But we want to make sure that everything we do in Buncombe County lines up with our strategic plan, so we can do a better job of tying them, so you can see which project is going directly to which priority, but I don't want to have a set-aside pot of money.
No, I guess what I was saying was that it will help people understand why we take the planning that we do, because I think people are looking for some abstract number there, as opposed to looking at our ability to respond to any number of things that come up. This is a hurricane, but there's any number of issues that come up, public safety-wise, infrastructure-wise, and being able to tie that back is kind of what I was getting at.
And we've done that with our last strategic plan. Every budget session, you will see it broken out by the five pillars, all the money that was going, but we'd like to make sure that whatever staff is doing is tied to that plan. So we'll make sure we do that going forward as well.
Commissioner Wells, I don't want to put you on the spot, I just want to catch you up really quickly, though, we're really just trying to have a quick discussion on general thoughts. This is the results of the Envision Buncombe Survey, sort of the community's top ten, if you will, in terms of the types of projects they're interested in, their priorities. I can speak for myself when I say that the project side of things is what I get sort of really excited about, right? Obviously, this was a horrible thing that happened to us, but when I try and look at the glasses half-full, I think of all of the opportunity presented. Parker, for example, HMGP is a huge pot of money, and it can do a number of things for us, right? There are opportunities within that pot of money that we can do things we may not have ever been able to dream of doing before, right? And that gets me very excited about, you know, again, the sustainability guy wanting to build resilience into, you know, public facilities, for example. So I'm hoping to hear from you what you're excited about, right? What opportunities do you see when you look at this and think, this is an exciting opportunity for our community?
You know, what I see through this, I think about when I became a commissioner nine years ago. I think about what we've been through since then, but one thing holds true, except I didn't see enough about the economy in there, economic development. But the people we represent are asking for one thing. It's the one thing that calls through all of this, and that's quality of life. And we can't lose track of that. They were concerned about it before, now, and they're concerned about where we go with it in the future. And that's got to be the underlying fact of everything that we do.
How do you describe quality of life, and what do you hear specifically when you say quality of life?
Everything, it's housing, education, the infrastructure, everything that we do.
Okay, thank you.
We can't lose track of that, that's what the bottom line is. You know, I think of that the way I did when I was in banking, it was all bottom line, what people want, and I think that's what we need, we can't lose track of it. And sometimes I think we can get in our silos, and we do lose track of it.
I think it's fairly reflective of what I hear when I'm out in the community. I read through it, and I appreciated that, and what you sent us, you kind of broke it down by some of the areas, because I was curious, did see that breakdown as well. One of them that does just really strike me, and based on what we're hearing and partly what we heard down in Raleigh, the food security, I think the survey was done before we found out they were canceling HOP, so, and I'm hearing so much more about that now. So I'm certainly glad that it was elevated and made it in here. My sense is that we would have heard a lot more about that had those announcements been made prior to this.
Fair point, fair point.
I, I find it interesting, I mean, the top ten are here, but if you look on page three and four, you can see what didn't make the cut into the top ten, and I think we can glean a lot from that because it is comparative. But I think, you know, as Commissioner Sloan mentioned, that the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, as Ryan Cole talked about earlier, so much of this can be achieved utilizing those funds, and I think we gotta think strategically how we utilize the HUD dollars to, to, to target some of this, but, um, you know, I think it's, it's interesting to see wildfire prevention, number three, that, that I am, I am, uh, heartwarming and also alarmed that folks are aware of this prob- problem.
Yeah.
Um, and I think at the end of the day, what's really rising to the top here is um, safety and stability for folks, folks really want their local government to ensure that they are safe, ensure that we have the infrastructure that we need so that folks can live their life, um, and I think that as we look at that safety piece, looking at the after-action reports, you know, looking at what happened and gleaning the lessons we can, um, because our, our emergency response had a massive stress test, and we can look back and say, well, well, what can we in- invest even more into, uh, be prepared for the next storm or the next wildfire, whatever it may be, so really keeping that focus on safety, stability is, is key.
Anyone else?
So just to clarify, so these, these project priorities are where you'll focus on specific projects that you're gonna do, or?
Yeah, this is in, in building out the Hailene Recovery Plan, right? Uh, we want to take community feedback and building that out, but commission feedback as well, uh, and so when we look at the, the, the top ten priorities we see here, and then we look at the projects that we've asked subject matter experts to sort of pitch, right? We've got many, um, you know, we want to line these things up, right? So, you know, when we've got over a hundred project ideas submitted to us, we can't put all one hundred in the plan, we can't have the thing be eight hundred pages, it's gotta be something that people can digest, and, and it's important to say that just because it doesn't necessarily end up in the plan doesn't mean it's not a priority, doesn't mean that it's not something we wouldn't seek funding for, um, but it does need to mirror what our community says is important to them, and what our board says is important to them, so, yeah, that's, that's the idea here, is to, to take this feedback, to take those projects, and when we come back to you in August, to have a much more sort of specific, like, these are the projects we're talking about, and this is sort of the step one in terms of how we, how we get there, right? How we identified those, because we, we wanted to match those to what the community says they want.
Thank you.
And the question you walked in on, it was anything missing from this top ten?
Yes.
Yeah, we want to make sure we capture that as well, from your perspective.
That's right, is there something you assumed would be here that's not? We did hear, you know, more economic revitalization was, you know, something I was surprised not to, not to see in that top ten.
Was that one of the items, though?
It was, it was, it just didn't end up in the top ten. Now, I, I will say that there's not a huge gap between ten and twelve, or ten and fifteen, you know, but we do have to draw the cutoff somewhere, so.
I think, Jeremiah, if you're asking me what I'd like to see in the plan and the final document, which it, which isn't what you just asked me, but I'm, but I'm gonna tell you, uh, like, there's this tension i- i- in me, if not of it, and everybody, everybody in the building, between kind of building back quickly and building back resilient, and like our desire to like, I want to take my kids to the park, like, that doesn't exist
Of course.
this weekend, right? We all do, probably, um, and there's that, we also have that responsibility to build
To do it right.
the, yeah, best we can, and that, and that's a tension that we're gonna feel, I think, stronger six months from now than we do today, and I, I guess all I ask is that we put some thought into that in the plan, and that we, whatever path we choose, it's, it's a path that we've chosen on purpose, and that there's some sort of, you know, that we speak to it.
Yeah.
I feel like that was alluded to in number seven a little bit, as well as resiliency investments, so number seven is, I think people were trying to say that a little bit, number seven.
Okay.
And I will tell you, from a project perspective, you know, each, the way we'll design this plan, each, each sort of project will have its own page, if you will, and we do have a goal to sort of try to set expectations in terms of, is this a near-term, sort of medium-term, or more of a long-term potential project, because as you said, some of these projects, I'm, I, I might be retired by the time they're finished, um, it's, some of this stuff is going to take time, not just because it's a complex project, but because we want to do it right, so I think you make a really good point, and, and our hope is to set those expectations in the plan. Well, I, I appreciate it, um, thank you very much for your feedback today, and, you know, we're around if you need us, um, and we'll be back in August to bring you some more concrete ideas and a little more, um, you know, examples of actual projects that are gonna end up in the plan, and I look forward to talking to you then.
Jeremiah, thanks for walking us through this, giving us the opportunity to add some additional input, we'll look forward to seeing you again in August with some more news and work.
Sounds good.
Appreciate it. All right, commissioners, we've come to, yes, to the end of this agenda, um, we do have time, I believe, to move into our closed session, we have a need for that this afternoon. Mr. Euler, would you like to share more information?
And we can stay...
Oh, yes, April, sorry.
We can stay here before you go into it, if you want, we can, we can stay here, we can go upstairs, your, your choice. Was the board, stay here?
I was gonna say we can go upstairs, but I think for the sake of time, we can just stay here.
Stay here, okay.
Yeah, let's do that.
Go into closed session.
All right, so I have the motion, uh, that the Board of Commissioners want a closed session for the following reasons, consult with an attorney employed over team number five in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between attorney and the public body, which is hereby acknowledged, to legal advice regarding executive orders, uh, one four, one five one, uh, one four, one seven three, and one four, two eight seven, there will be no formal action taken at this time. The other reason that we need to go into closed session is to establish or to instruct the public body staff or negotiating agents concerning the position taken by, on behalf of the public body, in negotiating the price or other material terms of a contract regarding the purchase of real property.
Thank you.
So moved on all of those numbers.
All right, so I heard Commissioner White sides, I'm gonna say more second, um, we are in closed session, we will adjourn from there for our five o'clock.